The regular meeting of the Aurora City Council for Monday.
Hold on. It's on.
Katie, is the mic on down here?
Okay.
Okay. Well, typically when they do this.
It's TT or the graphic expert. And then it's supposed to be sponsored by the company which is today. Yeah, and I didn't get happy that much, but that is coming today.
It's a typical way to go. Nobody brings beef flaps. What is the?
Adam is back.
After eight years? Oh, good. How long were you going to?
Yeah.
Let's do this. Okay. I know, I thought about that.
Because he's going to take the hard round, so I hope they do too.
Yeah.
And then.
Yep.
Is that okay?
Yep. I just know people wanted to have.
Well, I think it's just for their benefit. Let them have their moment and then you guys can, yeah.
They're going to get the.
Uh, I think so. Yeah, there is. May have to turn it off. Katie, is the mic on down here?
Okay.
Okay. The handheld.
Is that being plastic or what?
It's just, it's, you can see who it is, but it's just protective. No, no, he's going to check to make, he wants to see what he's doing first.
Hello, hello.
Oh my God. It's from Robinson. He might have left already, I'm not sure.
Why don't you ever tell him? When I look out, I look out and I'm like, I see Jack. I see Tanya. No, no, I'm just saying hi. Say hi. Tanya, I'm just saying hi.
Oh, yeah. That's a good point, so maybe they do. Yeah, I don't know. And we'll both be Ward Five and at large.
Mike. Mike check.
Can't hear you.
Mike check.
Can't hear you.
Mike check.
Oh, she will turn it on when it's time? Okay.
Oh my God. I hope everybody chills. I asked them to.
The regular meeting of the Aurora City Council for Monday, November 17, 2025 is called to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Take your seats, please.
Speaker. Don't think it's working. It's not working.
See, I covered my mouth, nobody else is hearing.
It's not working, man.
Test. Mayor Kaufman?
It's not working.
Mayor Kaufman? Nothing? Councilmember Bergen? Councilmember Coombs?
Present?
It's not on. Councilmember Coombs?
Present?
You can't hear me.
No.
Councilmember Gardner?
It's not working, what are we doing?
Just test, test, test.
Yeah, we're texting.
They're not working. Nope. We're, we're talking to Aurora TV, asking them about it.
We'll just scream.
I'm trying. Councilmember Gardner?
Here.
Councilmember Hancock? Councilmember Drinsky? Councilmember Kasaw?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson? Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Mario?
Present.
Mayor Protem Sundberg?
Here.
There's a quorum.
Please join me in an invocation. O Lord, our God, and our Father, we come to you and we ask that you look upon this particular gathering tonight to keep us safe and guide us in our decisions. Bless our city with honorable citizens, industry, sound education, and good government. You nod our community together, even though we come from different backgrounds. We pray that there be justice and peace in our city. Give the City Council and citizens the wisdom, direction, and sensitivity to the business and proceedings before us tonight. Hear us therefore as we commit this meeting to the help of the community, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Land acknowledgement, the City of Aurora acknowledges that we gather on the territories and ancestral homelands of the Cheyenne, Ute, Arapaho, and Lakota peoples, past and present. We also recognize the forty-eight contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado. Indigenous peoples have remained committed to the stewardship of this land over many centuries. As these words of acknowledgement are spoken and heard, the ties that these nations have to their traditional homelands and to their vital place in the ecosystem are renewed and reaffirmed, and we are called upon to be better stewards of the land we inhabit as we continue to work to meet the needs of our entire community.
Okay, Mayor, we need a five-minute recess from technology.
Okay, for technology, we need a five-minute recess. The time is now seven twenty-three. We will, what? We will reconvene at seven thirty.
So after, so you'll do the second session update, do the approval of the minutes, and then we'll give proclamations to start there. So I'll just step down and get my.
His tech issues. I know, yeah. Oh, this is working, though.
Yeah, they're there. They're reusing these.
Wait. Sorry. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Uh huh.
So at seven thirty, we're ready?
Yes.
We're ready now?
Seven thirty, because we just told everybody seven thirty was a recess.
Okay.
Mine's off, he's just picking up his.
All right, so.
Yeah. The regular meeting of the Aurora City Council for Monday, November 7, 2025 is back in session.
Executive session update, during the executive session, we discuss compensation for our three council appointees. A motion is, is in order for the approval of the minutes for November 3, 2025.
Mayor, I move to approve the minutes.
Moved by, it's moved by Mayor Protem Sundberg, seconded by Councilmember Kasaw to approve the minutes for November 3, 2025. Is there a discussion? I see no discussion, call for the question for the adoption of I've number six A.
Mayor Kaufman?
Mayor Volches.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt the November 3, 2025 council meeting minutes.
I will now be reading proclamations to the outgoing council members, and then after that, we can certainly hear from council members on the dice. Councilmember Kasaw. Proclamation, whereas Amseul Kasaw has served as an Aurora City Council member since his appointment in late 2024, and has been a proud champion and representative of all Aurora residents, and whereas Councilmember Kasaw, who came to America from Ethiopia in 2007, has called Aurora home for more than seventeen years and founded the Ethiopian-American Civic Council, and whereas Councilmember Kasaw has been honored with several community awards, including the 2024 Spirit Award from the City of Aurora, and the 2025 Model Citizen Award from Taste of Ethiopia, and whereas Councilmember Kasaw has served as a chair of the Housing Neighborhood Services and Redevelopment Policy Committee, vice chair of the Transportation, Airports, and Public Works Policy Committee, and member of the Public Safety Courts and Civil Service Policy Committee, and whereas Councilmember Kasaw has dedicated himself to building a safer, stronger, and more united city where every family feels safe and every business has a chance to grow, and whereas Councilmember Kasaw advocated for and supported work focused on expanding affordable housing, supporting law enforcement, and improving city infrastructure. And now therefore I, Mike Kaufman, Mayor of the City of Aurora, Colorado, along with the Aurora City Council, do hereby honor with gratitude Councilmember Amseul Kasaw, a witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Aurora, Colorado to be affixed on this seventeenth day of November, 2025. Mike Kaufman, Mayor of Aurora, Colorado.
All right, so before I want to say thank you, let me say this. So I'm deeply concerned by the reports of tragedy, violence against the Ethiopian Orthodox Christian in Ethiopia. So the killing of worship, and the burning of churches, and the displacement of families have caused trauma both in Ethiopia and within our Ethiopian diaspora here in Aurora. So at the large council member, I stand in full solidarity with our Ethiopian-American Christian community during this painful time. I join the community leaders and human rights advocates in calling of the Argentinian national action to protect civilians, support peace effort, and defend fundamental human rights of all those affected. And finally, Aurora, thank you so much. Thank you, Aurora, for allowing me to serve as your at-large council member. It has been an honor and blessing to present this incredible, great community. I'm grateful for your trust and support, though, in my council service, and my commitment to Aurora continues. Thank you for privilege of serving you. The fight will continue. Congratulate for the new elected officials, and good luck, and look forward to work with you. Thank you, Aurora, I love you so much, thank you.
Councilmember Crystal Mario.
Woo! You gotta come get this proclamation.
Jason. If you guys want to come down, if you guys want to come down and take pictures, feel free. Yep.
Flowers, that's right, that's right.
You can take pictures down here.
If you guys come down and take pictures in front.
Yeah, Crystal, okay.
Whereas Crystal Mario has served as an Aurora City Council member since 2017, and has been a proud champion and representative of the constituents of Ward One, and whereas Councilmember Mario, a lifelong Aurora resident, was the youngest and first Latina to serve on the Aurora City Council, and whereas Councilmember Mario has served as a chair of the Public Relations Communication, Tourism, Libraries, Boards, and Commissions, and Citizen Groups Policy Committee, vice chair of the Parks Foundation and Quality of Life Committee, and was a member of the Housing Neighborhood Services and Redevelopment Committee, and whereas Councilmember Mario has been active in several community organizations, including, but not limited to, the High Line Canal Collaborative, Sand Creek Regional Greenway, and the State's Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Council, and whereas before her time representing Ward One, Councilmember Mario also served on the City of Aurora Citizen Advisory Committee on Housing and Community Development, and whereas Councilmember Mario advocated for affordable housing, community wealth building, and the opportunities for all in Aurora, and whereas Councilmember Mario joined the push to redevelop and revitalize the East Colfax Corridor, an idea that has now taken shape in the form of a voter-approved downtown development authority. Now therefore I, Mike Kaufman, Mayor of the City of Aurora, Colorado, along with the Aurora City Council, do hereby honor with gratitude Councilmember Crystal Mario for her service and commitment to bettering the lives of Aurora residents. A witness whereof I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Aurora, Colorado to be affixed this seventeenth day of November, 2025. Mike Kaufman, Mayor of Aurora, Colorado.
Woo!
Whereas here's somebody else that's on the right side of justice.
Oh my gosh, okay. Thank you really, everyone, for being here tonight, especially to my family. Thank you for eight years of unwavering love, support, holding my hand when I needed it, being there for a hug, a cry, a cheer when we got some stuff done. Thank you to my friends, my partner, Parker, let's go. And really to the truly beautiful community that I see tonight here in Aurora. It fills my heart. It has been truly one of the greatest honors of my very long life to serve in this role. When I was first selected, I was twenty-three years old, and it feels surreal. Time kind of just passed me by, you know? And here we are, eight years later. I remember walking through those doors, not knowing what was, what I was in store for. And it's been a wild ride. It's been, there's been ups and downs. You know, the last two years have been particularly difficult, I'll be honest with you all. It was hard many times, every, every Monday, being told that my voice didn't matter. Literally not being able to speak as an elected representative for my district, being stripped away of that right was really difficult. And I will say that was really challenging, but I, in the same way that I, you know, ran in 2017 and was full of hope, I'm full of hope again. And that's thanks to you all. Thanks to you all, really. You all have re-inspired me with your dedication, your blood, sweat, tears, your wonderful words, and just showing me what a small group of committed people can do all over again. And I'm forever grateful for that lesson and learning that lesson again. So really, I, I think this night is in honor of this great transition, and let me tell you, if you think this was long, wait till, you haven't seen nothing. We've had like two AM meetings, okay? So that, all that means is we got to buckle down, and when our friends and our colleagues call on us to support, that we're there. We're there with dinner, we're there with encouraging words, we're there with silly memes that we're texting because it's a really long meeting, and we're here and not just at the beginning and not just at the end, and that's a commitment that you have from me. I can't wait to share all the things I've learned for better and for worse over the last eight years with you all. And I am just, again, just so truly honored that y'all are here and that we will see what this new council will do. And you know, I will be here, just, I get to be on the other side now. All right, y'all, thank you, thank you so much, truly grateful for every single one of you all. I hope this isn't the last time we'll see you here. Much love, peace.
Yay!
Mayor Protem. Whereas Steve Sundberg has served as an Aurora City Council member since 2021, was selected by fellow council members as Mayor Protem, and has been a proud champion and representative for the constituents of Ward Two, and whereas Mayor Protem Sundberg, a longtime Aurora business owner, has been honored with multiple community awards, such as the Chamber Leadership Award from the Aurora Chamber of Commerce, and 2024's Small Business of the Year Award, and
Whereas there's somebody else on the right side of justice.
Oh, my gosh. Okay. Thank you, really, everyone, for being here tonight, especially to my family. Thank you for eight years of unwavering love, support, holding my hand when I needed it, being there for a hug, a cry, a cheer when we got some stuff done. Thank you to my friends, my partner, Parker, Cisco, and really to the truly beautiful community that I see tonight here in Aurora. It fills my heart. It has been truly one of the greatest honors of my very long life to serve in this role. When I was first selected, I was 23 years old, and it feels surreal. Time kind of just passed me by, you know? And here we are, eight years later. I remember walking through those doors, not knowing what was in store for. And it's been a wild ride. It's been, there's been ups and downs. You know, the last two years have been particularly difficult. I'll be honest with you all. It was hard many times, every Monday, being told that my voice didn't matter, literally not being able to speak as an elected representative for my district, being stripped away of that right, was really difficult. And I will say that was really challenging, but I, in the same way that I, you know, ran in 2017 and was full of hope, I'm full of hope again. And that's thanks to you all. Thanks to you all, really. You all have re-inspired me with your dedication, your blood, sweat, tears, your wonderful words, and just showing me what a small group of committed people can do all over again. And I'm forever grateful for that lesson and learning that lesson again. So really, I think this night is in honor of this great transition. And let me tell you, if you think this was long, wait till, you haven't seen nothing. We've had like 2:00 AM meetings, okay? So all that means is we've got to buckle down, and when our friends and our colleagues call on us to support, that we're there. We're there with dinner. We're there with encouraging words. We're there with silly memes that we're texting because it's a really long meeting, and we're here, not just at the beginning and not just at the end. And that's a commitment that you have from me. I can't wait to share all the things I've learned, for better and for worse, over the last eight years with you all. And I am just, again, just so truly honored that y'all are here and that we will see what this new council will do. And, you know, I will be here, just, I get to be on the other side now. All right, y'all, thank you, thank you so much. Truly grateful for every single one of you all. I hope this isn't the last time we'll see you here. Much love, peace.
Whereas Steve Sundberg has served as an Aurora City Council member since 2021, was selected by fellow council members as Mayor Protem, and has been a proud champion and representative for the constituents of Ward Two. And whereas Mayor Protem Sundberg, a longtime Aurora business owner, has been honored with multiple community awards, such as the Chamber Leadership Award from the Aurora Chamber of Congress, and 2024's Small Business of the Year Award. And whereas Mayor Protem Sundberg served on several policy committees, including Public Safety, Water Policy, Planning and Economic Development, and Parks Foundations and Quality of Life. And whereas Mayor Protem Sundberg has been active in several community groups, including but not limited to the Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority and Mile High Flood District. And whereas, as an advocate for children, Mayor Protem Sundberg has championed youth sports and programming, and served as a court-appointed special advocate. And whereas Mayor Protem Sundberg worked to proactively address issues facing Aurora's unhoused community, including advocating for and bringing to life the city's heart court, Housing, Employment, Addiction, Recovery, and Teamwork, urban camping policy, and quote-unquote "give real change" program. And whereas Mayor Protem Sundberg relentlessly advocated for a new fire station in Ward Two, working with city leaders, first responders, and community partners to take Future Fire Station 18 from an idea to reality. Now, therefore, I, Mike Coffin, Mayor of the City of Aurora, along with the Aurora City Council, do hereby honor with gratitude Mayor Protem Steve Sundberg for his service and commitment to bettering the lives of Aurora residents. A witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Aurora, Colorado, to be fixed on this 17th day of November 2025. Mike Coffin, Aurora Mayor.
Thank you, everyone. What an honor, an incredible honor this has been, this four years. It's gone pretty fast, most of the time. And wow, what I've learned across so many departments, from legal to water to planning. Laura, is, do we have to get a study to hire the right consultant, or is it a consultant to get the right study? I can't remember. No, anyway, the process, and I've learned to be patient with the process. It's better to do it right, first time. For me, this has been a seven-day-a-week job. Sometimes I forget that I probably shouldn't email staff on Sundays, but I did just yesterday in a few different ways. But it is a seven-day-a-week job, and just the honor of meeting the big thinkers, the movers, the shakers in Ward Two. I drive through my ward with pride, knowing the infrastructure is coming. It's a matter of time. And advocated for solar, for U.S. Solar 30-megawatt program there, just west of the landfill that'll supply about 30,000 low-income homes. Affordable housing, from Liberty Bell to Walden 35 to Cross Purpose, we have brought so much on and so much multifamily housing that permitting is down about 94% for multifamily homes. And multifamily homes, apartment complexes are competing with affordable housing, bringing prices down and bringing more incentives into the market for renters. And I ran in self-defense for city council to protect business, and I didn't want my city to sprint in the direction of Seattle and San Francisco and Portland. And we signaled to the business community that this is a friendly city to do business in. And in 2021, when I ran, I learned how fearful people were of crime. We were the number-one state for car theft for quite some time. But of course, our police department always needs to continue to build trust in the community. But is there anybody here that honors and appreciates our police department? Can you give them a hand? Most of you, most of you appreciate them, I think. So what an incredible honor, and I have fond memories. I've learned such an incredible, not to repeat myself, mayor, but thank you for your leadership. Jason, thank you to you, sir. Pete, God bless you. Roberto and Laura, thank you. Marshall, appreciate you, sir. There he is. And to my fellow council members, thank you, everyone, for serving the city, and congratulations to the new council members coming on board. God bless you all. Appreciate you.
Let me be the first to say that, to thank the three outgoing members who have served our city, it is certainly not an easy task and is incredibly demanding. And so I want to thank Councilmember Crystal Murillo in Ward One, Northwest Aurora. And then certainly Councilmember Absolu Kasah, first representative from the Ethiopian community to serve on the Aurora City Council. And of course, I want to thank Mayor Protem Steve Sundberg for his tireless efforts to improve our city. And with that, I'll recognize other members. Councilmember Coombs.
Sure. Okay. All right. Thank you, mayor. And thank you to my colleagues for your service. Councilmember Kasah, thank you for standing for your community and really bringing that representation and hope, and also speaking when there's an injustice against your community so that folks in these chambers can hear. And I wish you the best of luck moving forward. Councilmember Sundberg, thank you for your service. I appreciate the times early on when we were able to represent opposing views with respect to leadership Aurora and to high school students when we were speaking to their classes. And I wish you the best of luck in your next endeavors as you leave council. And Councilmember Murillo, who I'm sure is celebrating at this time, but this will be recorded, she can watch it later, maybe not be too embarrassed. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Murillo. In 2017, when you ran, you showed us that change was possible in our city. You often stood alone when you needed to, if it meant doing the right thing. And that inspired me to run and to have the courage of my convictions even as things were difficult. I want to thank you for your friendship, solidarity, advocacy, and courage. I wish that I was sharing this incoming majority with you, but I am so grateful that you were with me in the hard times, and look forward to your continued leadership, friendship, and advocacy in other roles outside of council.
Further comments?
Mayor.
Councilmember Lawson.
So I know Councilmember Murillo is not here, but I want to thank her. When she came on, we were dealing, I remember, one really big issue, the mobile home park. And Councilmember Murillo stood tirelessly and actually showed a lot of us of what we needed to represent during that time. She also served on the Regional Transportation Committee. She was appointed at the state capitol, and I worked on the Reimagine RTD. So we shared some very projects with trying to make RTTD work during that time. And I worked with her in learning what they were doing at the state, and then she kind of worked with me in what they were doing on RTD Reimagine. Councilmember Murillo also went to many Pfizer trips with us. And although a lot of people think that me and Councilmember Murillo were in opposition all the time, me and her had a lot of great conversations, and we discussed a lot of things. So we may not have been ideologically on everything, but I appreciate her, really, even though we were against each other on some things, we did have very, very, you know, good conversations, especially when we went on those trips. And I think that's something that a lot of people didn't know. So I want to thank her. We served when COVID was during that time. I mean, she went through a lot of different experiences along with me, and I really do appreciate her service, especially on the Housing Committee, where she really advocated for, you know, affordable housing and ensuring that the housing equity was in our city. So I want to thank her, and it was great serving with her, and I wish her the best. I'm going to go to Councilmember Mayor Protem Sundberg. I served with you as well for four years. In the beginning, you know, we had a discussion during that time when we were trying to get the vote for that position. And I really do appreciate you reaching out and us having that conversation and working with you on a lot of projects that we did work on together, and how tirelessly you did work for Ward Two. And I hope that you see and still advocate for Ward Two because you live there. So I thank you for your service and the time that I've served with you on the four years. And then Councilmember Absolu Kasah, thank you for telling me a lot about your community. I appreciate your service on, as the Chair of the Housing Committee, and I hope that you stay active. And even though it's been a short time, I appreciate your service in working with you as well. So thank you.
Further comments?
Mayor.
Councilmember Medina.
Yes, I'd like to say thank you to Absolu Kasah. Thanks for your dedication to your community. Also, I look forward to doing some projects with you in your home country of Ethiopia, as we have common bonds there in Africa, as I've done plenty of projects there. So I look forward to those opportunities that we can help your community there and also the community that's here in Aurora. Mayor Protem Steve Sundberg, thank you for your commitment to your community. I hope you want, you continue to serve youth with your dedication to sponsorships of many schools. They're a vital process for a lot of schools who struggle a lot of time, so that is a very, you know, great thing to do for that part of that community, because I know sometimes people forget a lot of young people, and so I appreciate that. So good luck in your next endeavors, and you know where to contact me. Crystal, thanks for all the compassion, love, and care for your community in Ward One. Thanks for your youthful perspective and your inspiration to others to reclaim their voices. I look forward to seeing what you do in the future, and I hope we'll stay in contact to work on other projects. So thank you.
Councilmember Hancock.
I guess I get to be last. That's okay. Just want to make sure I say this right. I want to take a moment to offer my heartfelt gratitude to my colleagues, Steve Sundberg, Absolu Kasah, Danielle Jorinsky, and Crystal Murillo. Each of you has brought a unique perspective and a voice, and a strong work ethic, and a deep commitment to serving the people of Aurora. Steve, I thank you for your steadfast leadership and your dedication to our community. And, you know, when I first decided to run for office, you were right there, and you were encouraging me to step up and step out to be a citizen servant, because at first we're citizens, and then we step up to serve. This is not an easy job. Most of the time, at least 50% of the people hate you, but you still do it anyway, and I appreciate that. Absolu, I thank you for reminding us that dreams do come true, that when you decide to make a new country your home, and you step out, and you bring your family, and you change your whole world, that this country opened its arms to you and allowed you to thrive and to grow and to serve your community. And I know that you will continue to do so. This is just a chapter in your story. It's not the end, and I know that we'll see great things from you in the future. Danielle, though you were a lightning rod to most everyone, you, everybody knew what you stood for, and you were determined, and you were steadfast, and you didn't take nonsense from people, and I respect that a lot. You know, again, 50% of the people are going to hate everything you do, but you've got to stand on your own convictions, and you do so, and you did that with determination, and you accomplished some good things. Crystal, your commitment, and I told her when we were on Washington DC trip, girl, I have shoes older than you. And we had some great times in DC, and though we may be in different ideological and generational perspectives, I do respect the work that she did in the Aurora Cultural Arts District where we first met, and the fact that she champions underserved communities. At the end of the day, despite our different perspectives and approaches, the common commitment that we all share is to serve the people of Aurora. We all set out to serve because we care deeply about our community and the people who call it home. We don't, we shouldn't always agree, but we should always remember that it is the people of Aurora that we do serve, and it's been an honor to work alongside each and every one of you. I look forward to working with the new council to remember that this, the business of this city is to make our city where we can live, work, grow, and thrive as a community, to dispel and put aside ideological discourse when it gets in the way of moving our city forward. We must always keep that in mind. We have examples of where it goes wrong, and we have examples of where it goes right. So let's look at the right and remember that we are citizen servants here to serve our community.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish, I think everybody's spoken. The next item before us is the adoption of the agenda. Mayor Protem.
Oh, I move to approve the agenda with item 16A removed.
It's removed by Mayor Protem Sundberg, seconded by?
Hancock.
Seconded by Councilmember Hancock to approve the adoption of the agenda as amended. Discussion?
Mayor, may I just one comment on that?
Please.
So that was inadvertently put on the agenda tonight, so thank you, Mayor Protem, for having that. Since council head decided to go back in person in full tonight, as the rules were prior to May, it was unnecessary. So I wanted to make sure everybody knew that there wasn't anything going on with that.
Okay. Discussion? Seeing none, call for the question on the adoption of the agenda as amended.
Mayor Kaufman.
Mayor Ochess.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt the agenda with item 16A removed.
And next item before us is the adoption of the consent calendar on motions, item number 9A1 to 9C5.
So move, mayor.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem Sundberg, seconded by?
Mayor, second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lawson. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of the consent calendar on motions, item number 9A1 to 9C5.
Mayor Kaufman.
Mayor Ochess.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt the consent calendar for motions.
Next item before us is the adoption of the consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances, item number 10A1 to 10B1.
So move.
Motion is in order.
Mayor, mayor, I move that we adopt items, agenda items 10A1 to 10A10.
10. It's removed by Councilmember Hancock.
Mayor, Councilmember Hancock.
It should be 10B1, yeah. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, 10B1?
10B1.
Okay, very well. It's moved by Councilmember Hancock, seconded by?
Kasah.
Seconded by Councilmember Kasah. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of the consent calendar on
Councilmember Lawson. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously to adopt the consent calendar for resolutions and ordinances.
Okay. Clerk, now please read the title of item number 11A.
Item 11A is public hearing in consideration of ordinance 2025-06 for zoning map amendment to rezone approximately 3.91 acres of land to medium-density residential district located south of the intersection of East Joel Avenue and South Juliet Street.
City Attorney.
Thank you, mayor. Members of council, this, due to the election, since there could be some due process concerns about having two different, very different councils hearing this matter, my advice tonight is to continue this item until earlier than December 15th, so the new council can have both readings of the public hearing, just to make sure there's no issues there, and make sure they get a fair hearing with the council that'll be making the final decision.
Motion is in order to continue item number 11A to December 15th.
Mayor, I move to continue 11A to December 15th.
It's moved by Councilmember Lawson, seconded by?
Kasah.
Seconded by Councilmember Kasah to continue to December 15th. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, call for the question on the adoption, on the adoption of the motion to move item number 11A, continue item number 11A to December 15th.
Mayor Kaufman.
Mayor Ochess.
The motion passes unanimously to continue item 11A to the December 15th council meeting.
Clerk, now please read the title to item number 12A.
Item 12A is introduction of ordinance 2025-105, eliminating the Veterans Affairs Commission.
Item 12A is Introduction of Ordinance 2025-105, Eliminating the Veterans Affairs Commission.
Brief presentation by staff.
Mayor and council, this is City Manager Jason Bachelor. So at study session, you all had given guidance for the Veterans Affairs Commission to meet, I think, every other month. We took them that guidance, and then at their meeting in October or September, they voted to recommend that you all go ahead and eliminate the Veterans Affairs Commission. We included a copy of that letter in the backup, and so we brought it forward for your consideration in accordance with the recommendation of the Veterans Affairs Commission.
This, motion is in order.
Mayor.
So moved by Councilmember Kasah, seconded by Councilmember Coombs to, for the adoption of item number 12A. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Potem Sundberg.
Yes, thank you, sir. Just to clarify, this is to honor their own request
That's correct.
as a council to disband?
Yes.
Okay.
Further discussion? Seeing none, call for the question.
Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Hancock.
I just wanted to point out also that while this commission is going to be dissolved, there will still be opportunities for us to honor our veterans, to support our, which I am one, to honor our veterans and support our veterans and to recognize them at public functions throughout the year, the Purple Flag Ceremony, the Veterans Day event, and those other things. Even though the commission doesn't exist anymore, we will still honor, support, and do the right things by our
That's correct. Councilmember Hancock, that's correct. In fact, the city just held a veteran salute last week.
Veteran's salute.
Further discussion? Seeing none, call for the question on the adoption of item
The motion passes unanimously to adopt item 12A.
Clerk, now please read the title to item number 13A.
Item 13A is Finalizing of Ordinance 2025-102, Amending Section 5037 of the City Code of the City of Aurora, Colorado, Related to Funding for Community Service Agencies and Programs.
Brief presentation by staff.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Jessica Prosser, Director of Housing and Community Service. This ordinance continues the funding related to the Youth Violence/Save Program that was created in 2020 to continue efforts to reduce gun violence in our community and offer services to those that are victims and affected by those gun violence acts.
Questions of staff? Motion is in order.
Mayor, I move to, move to approve 12, I mean, I'm sorry, 13A.
It's removed by Councilmember Lawson, seconded by
Hancock.
Seconded by Councilmember Hancock to approve item number 13A. Discussion? Seeing none, call for the question on the adoption of item number 13A.
The motion passes with six yes votes, one no vote from Councilmember Gardner.
With clerk, now please read the title to item number 15A.
Item 15A is Consideration to Reappoint Three Members to the Public Defender Commission.
And, Mayor, so what happened at the last meeting was that the vote was undone. So this is now appearing on your agenda as it's coming like it was at the last meeting. So your options are, you can move to reappoint the three, or you can direct staff to set up a process. So that's where we are on this item. Somebody asked me that question, so I want to make that clear.
Okay. Motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
Move to reappoint Francis Brown, David Kaplan, and Pamela Williams to the Public Defender Commission.
Moved by Councilmember Coombs, seconded by Councilmember Medina. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
So I did talk to Councilmember Bergen about this. I don't know if she's left, but she was the one who originally initiated the reconsideration. And the concern here is that these commissioners actually have, so it's a commission of seven, and right now they only have four without the reappointment of these three. And they have the evaluation of staff, they have salary recommendations, budget recommendations, a lot of year-end work to be completed. And we had four whole months while this was open to determine whether we wanted to have a different process for the appointment of these individuals. So I would ask my colleagues to allow the orderly process of this commission as it's constituted with these three folks reappointed. And this next year, there will be four more folks that are up, or four more positions up for appointment. And so ahead of appointing those four folks, we can go ahead and determine whatever process we'd like to determine. But in the meantime, we can actually let them finish out the year with all the work they need to do with a full commission instead of half a commission. So I'd urge my colleagues to please vote in support of reappointing these three.
Further discussion? Seeing none, call for the question on the adoption of the Coombs motion to 15A.
Mayor Kaufman.
Mayor Ochess.
The motion passes unanimously to reappoint the three members to the Public Defender Commission.
So this will be, at this point, there'll be any call-ups that council would like to consider at this point?
Councilmember Coombs.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to call up the QuickTrip Bubble Bath Car Wash approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And I will, I will second that move. Discussion? Seeing none, call for the question on the Coombs motion to, what is it?
Call up the conditional use approval of the Bubble Bath Car Wash.
And so it's been a while since we've done, we've done a call-up on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So just to be clear for council, is if you vote in support of this, what it'll do is it'll be an appeal. So it'll come back to council no earlier, if I can have this as a friendly amendment, no earlier than December 15th, to give staff and our planning folks enough time to get the appeal ready and get the notices out and so forth. But once that's done, it'll get set at a future agenda if this is, if this passes by majority.
Very well. Friendly amendment?
Yes.
Further discussion? Call for the question on the Coombs motion.
Mayor Kaufman.
Mayor Ochess.
Councilmember Lawson, thank you. The motion passes with seven yes votes and one no vote to appeal the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision. And it will come back on December 15th.
No earlier than.
No, no earlier than.
No earlier than December 15th.
We've got to get the time, yeah, make sure Seth has time.
Well, applicant two.
Everybody, yeah.
Okay. Reports. Councilmember Gardner.
No report.
Councilmember Coombs.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say a very heartfelt congratulations to the folks who were, who won their elections this, is it this past Tuesday or the Tuesday before? I don't even know what day it is anymore. But those who won their elections, I look forward to serving with all of you. You all have also given me hope where it was on my end a little bit lost. I had become a little bit jaded. And your dedication and your maintaining the optimism and the faith through difficult uphill battles has brought hope back to me. And I look forward to what we can get done. And again, to my colleagues who are outgoing, thank you very much for your service and your dedication. And I look forward to seeing you continue to work in our community. And there was something else that has now slipped my mind. But so, thank you all so much, and have a great night.
Mayor Potem Sundberg.
Thank you, sir. The Regional Navigation Campus officially opened today for full service. And let's see, this last week, I attended a windmill dedication ceremony in Murphy Creek. The windmill is sort of the figure for that development. The other one disintegrated, fell apart, and was a liability. They took it down. So to me, the windmill stands as a tribute to the determination for people to keep their neighborhoods looking damn good and fighting for them. And a gentleman named Dennis Lyon, if anybody remembered Dennis Lyon, who served Parks Recreation Open Space, who was a giant in the golf community, he helped with the design and construction of Murphy Creek Golf Course and started with the City of Aurora, I think, 34-ish years ago. Long career, very respected man, quite a gentleman. Amsalu Kasah and I attended the Salvation Army fundraiser with that leadership. It was very positive. And of course, Debbie Stafford is the incredible auctioneer, showing herself all these events and giving up her time. Thank you for all you do. And speaking of veterans, I met a 103-year-old veteran who saved, served in the Navy, Navy Aviation Transport. Her name is Vicky Harrell, sharp as a tack, vision's going down a little bit, but what an incredible woman and amazing story. So it's so rare to find and encounter a World War II veteran these days. And our, our city should be proud. There was a report from DoorDash saying that Aurora leads the nation in affordability, business growth, and new families, based on all their data. So we've been doing a few things right, apparently. God bless y'all. Love you. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Kasah.
All right. So first, you know, thank you so much. Really, you know, grateful working with the city staff. And, you know, I really want to say thank you, City Manager Jason and Pete and everybody, Laura and Marcia. I mean, it's a big family. So I want to say thank you so much. And I just want to say this, last week, we do attend a lot of events, but one of the things that I want to mention is the public safety. So our, you know, Aurora Police Department is really attracting more young recruiters, youngest, and retail theft is down 70%, homicide down at 21%, and robbery down by, you know, 43. Motor vehicle theft is, you know, down. So our rates, our rates are up. So my message or our message is clear. So don't come to Aurora, you know, breaking the law. But I really want to say thank you so much. I love you. Thank you for the service member, law enforcement, every staff. You know, the fight is not over. We will continue fighting for the community. At the end of the day, we all work, you know, for the community. And love you. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Hancock. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Medina.
It's all good. So I had my town hall last Wednesday. Normally, they're on Tuesdays. I had Jason out and his crew. It's a pretty good town hall, very robust, a lot of people attended. He wooed them enough that he didn't, I don't think he had too many hard questions. Weird. There was a lot of talk around the police department. They did a very good job of getting information out to the public as far as issues and concerns that they had there. So I look forward to my next one, which will be in January. I usually take December off just because the holidays and people are kind of busy. Thank you all to the all council members who are outgoing. Appreciate the opportunity to get to know you, and hopefully look forward to seeing you in the future and to the new council members to come on board. Welcome aboard, and we look forward to working with you. So, thank you.
Councilmember Hancock.
Thanks, Mayor. We were busy these past few weeks. I had a town hall at Belavita Senior Living. It was really a great group of folks there. We had, we have a World War II veteran that lives in that community as well. We also, I joined Councilmember Sundberg at the dedication of the, and the mayor of the VFW facility out on Colfax. And it was designated by the Historical Society as a cultural, as a historic landmark, which is really great, to remember, you know, those who served and who have served and honor them. We also, I toured a data center for the first time. I'd never been to one before. And, you know, it really made me realize the importance of our energy future as a community and the power that we will need to sustain us, that it is not solar and, or solar or wind. It's solar and wind and nuclear energy. And we need to think about that for our future because AI depends on power. And if we're going to be leaders in the country and in the world, we must, for national security and for our own needs, have that kind of power, that baseline power that nuclear energy provides. And we'll be talking more about that in my town halls and in the upcoming year. I also, you know, wanted to again reiterate that despite our ideological, political differences, we as a city council, as someone had said, I don't know if they meant it or not, that we remember who we work for. I remember every day who I work for, and I work for the constituents of Ward Four. In January, I will be getting bimonthly town halls, because there's so much information that you as a community need to know, and I want to make sure that you're getting it. And it is my, my hope and my belief that if you want to get this information, you need to come out to the meetings. There's all kinds of ways for you to talk to us on the city council. There's email, there's phone. You call us up, we do call you back. We don't have staff. We work for ourselves. So we, we call you back. And at our town halls, it is our honor to serve as citizen servants. This, again, is a chapter in each, in every one of our lives. We serve at the good, at the good nature of the, of the community. If you decide you don't want us anymore, then you don't. We won't die. We'll just do something else. It's, it's important for us to also remember that we should work together in cohesion as a council despite our differences, because at the end of the day, it's the city that we serve. And we don't want to be, we, we see the, the case studies in other cities, San Francisco, Philadelphia, Chicago, Denver. We can just go down the road. We don't want to be like that. We want to be the city that exemplifies, we're the gold standard of how municipalities should be run. And it's my belief, and I will believe that as long as I'm on this council, and will work as hard as I can towards that end. I look forward to working with the new council members. I don't know any of them, and I'm looking forward to meeting each and every one of you. I don't know who you are, but I'm looking forward to meeting you and getting to know you, and hopefully we can find some shared things that we can work on to move our city forward. And that's my report, Mayor.
Well, thank you. Just, I'm very excited about the passage of the Downtown Development Authority and look forward to working, well, appointing at the consent of council. I will nominate with the consent of council, the board. That will be making critical decisions in terms of the revitalization and redevelopment of Colfax corridor between Peoria and Yosemite, about roughly two blocks north, two blocks south, and look forward to get that process going. I want to thank
Ward Five.
What's that?
Ward Five.
Uh-oh. I'm in trouble.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I'm leaving right now.
And you live in Ward Five.
Councilmember Lawson. Ouch.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I will be having my final town hall tomorrow. It will be at Central Rec Center, and it'll start at 6:30. We're going to be having parking enforcement, and we're also going to have forestry and the Q and A. I want to thank all of my constituents, and even constituents who didn't live in my ward, who came to all my meetings, which I had two a month from February through November. And I'm only having one this month. But we will reconvene the two a month in February, give everybody a break from me. But everybody knows I'm accessible and where I'm at. So I hope I will see a lot of my constituents and anyone who wants to come to the Ward Five meetings to my meeting tomorrow. I also want to thank my two colleagues, Councilmember Hancock and Councilmember Medina, for actually going and speaking to the youth at the Youth Civic Engagement Academy. I appreciate you both. I heard you guys did a fabulous job, as it was not even anything known that you guys wouldn't. But thank you for doing that and working with the youth as well. And Mayor, that's my report.
Okay. Well, I just, I want to thank the outgoing members again for your service. I think we have talked about that. And welcome the incoming members, and look forward to working with you. And I think I now have a schedule with each and every one of you before the end of the year to, to talk about your goals and aspirations for this city. And then today, opened the Aurora Regional Navigation Center, which I think was an extraordinary feat, and feat and really an incentive-based system where we'll have three tiers to it. First one, Congress Shelter, but we want to get people moved out of there who, and they'll be rewarded for participating in case management and addiction recovery and mental health, in job training in the second tier, which has better accommodations. And then a very robust transitional housing component to it with the 255 rooms of the hotel. And so it'd be interesting to see how many people went there today. Very excited about closing down the Aurora Day Resource Center that is our current homeless shelter. It was a gym that was built during World War II as a temporary building. It is, it will be great to demolish that, that building. So with that, let me turn it over to our city attorney, Pete Schulte.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, council and our new council members that are sitting in the galley. What I wanted to talk about was, my planning staff would be really mad at me if I didn't remind everybody of this. So now that the, the car wash issue has been called up and will be coming to council, it's going to be an appeal. That's what we call a quasi judicial hearing, which means all evidence regarding that appeal can only come from the public hearing here in the council chambers from the dais. So if any of the applicants or anybody emails you anything, don't read it, just forward it to my staff or to the planning staff and I'm asking the applicant and those that are, that are going to be part of this process, please don't do that because it puts the council members in a unique spot, but everything has to come through the evidence here and that's what we're talking about, about giving some time no earlier than December 15th so our staff and you guys and the applicant, everybody else can get their ducks in a row and get ready for that hearing. But again, council, if you get those, you guys know the direction. We'll get to talk about it a lot tomorrow. I look forward to it, but this was a good, good segue to see you all tomorrow afternoon, so.
Seeing no further business before the Aurora City Council Meeting is adjourned.